Order, Rockoff, please.
Alderman Lazara, Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski, Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from April 9th, 2015.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution to seek approval in a government agreement between the City of Wooddale and the Village of Addison for dispatching service. Now, I turn it over to you, Chief.
Thanks, sir. Tonight, we're here to talk about possible consolidation of dispatch services in Wooddale and going with Addison Consolidated Dispatch Center. I did put together a PowerPoint presentation. I know there's been some informational briefings in the past, but kind of so people at home can also understand why this is even being considered. It's a huge step, and it's a big impact to many people that work here and to the residents. And I just think it's important that we go through why this is even being considered and, you know, kind of the research that went into what's going on now. So, based on that, just a little bit of history. Currently, we handle about nineteen thousand calls for service per year. That's officer-initiated activities, 911 calls, calls for service, you name it. That runs up to about nineteen thousand calls for service each year. About three thousand of those calls are initiated through 911 calls that come right into our dispatch center. And obviously, we have a twenty-four, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week operation. We currently have seven full-time telecommunications and a supervisor. And actually, one of the things that our staff should be proud of is we have zero turnover in the last eight years. We have people that have been here for eight years, up to over twenty years. We have not had anyone leave. In this line of work, turnover is pretty common. And we've had a lot of comments from our assessors about the group of employees we have. And we had one retirement last year, but other than that, we have a really stable group of staff in there. Our communication center is accredited, separate from the police department. They first achieved that in 2003. And it takes over two hundred standards of performance that they have to prove every single year. And a group of assessors from outside the state come in every three years and give us a long look at our operation and then provide a twenty-some-page report that's been shared with the public and council in the past as to strengths, weaknesses, and the overall state of our communication center. We're only one of four in the state and only seventy-five total in the nation. And only fifteen municipalities, our communication center accredited. The rest are sheriff's office or consolidated centers. And until 2011, we did dispatch for the Wooddale Fire Protection District. They chose to leave at that point to go to DUCOM, to be dispatched with the other fire departments throughout the county. At that time, we were the only police department that also dispatched for a fire department in the county. So, most importantly, tonight, the discussion about consolidation has absolutely nothing to do with the level of service, any problems we're having in there. It's very difficult for our employees and a difficult conversation to have, but something that really, beyond our control, has come to a head by many things outside of this room or our agency. So, that's why we're here tonight talking about it. The DuPage County Emergency Telephone System Board, they're kind of our guiding agency. And they govern a lot of the equipment purchases and how our 911 system is set up. And we're financially supported by them through a lot of our equipment, a lot of our software, our 911 equipment. And the ICC has a great deal of authority over them. All those fees are funded through wireless and wireline revenues that are on your phone bill. And those pay, those come through the DuPage County ETSB. And through that, the ETSB Board, which is made up of county board members, police, fire representatives, citizen representatives. They decide on the design of the system and where those fees go to make a 911 system throughout DuPage County. Some other things that they pay for, it covers the cost of our CAD system, which is our computer-aided dispatching system, our Premier MDC, which is our dispatching software that goes in the squad cars, automated our GPS systems for the vehicles, the AVLs, the 911 call-taking positions, our administrative phone system, our Starcom radio system, which is the interoperable countywide system that's now up and running. And they pay for, they paid for the integration of Net RMS. We pay about $3,000 per year for the maintenance and upgrade of that system. But all of that is funded through the DuPage 911 system, and they provide the technical support for those. So, the first pressure that came in is they're looking to upgrade most of those systems. And obviously, their goal is to keep those costs as low as they can countywide. Couple more things with the DuPage ETSB. Over the last several years, there's been significant consolidations throughout the county, to the point that Wooddale is one of only three independent PSAPS that are left in the whole county. It's us, ITASKA, and Glendale Heights. Everyone else is dispatched through a consolidated center. ITASKA, I know what they're, go ahead, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Just for the residents, if you can say what PSAPS are.
Public Safety Answering Point, so same thing as a 911 center, so apologize for that. ITASKA, this week, at their committee level, they are going to be looking to move to Addison as a consolidated dispatch center. And I'm not sure if Glendale Heights finds those plans, but we are one of the three left. So, why can't Wooddale be a consolidated center? Create our own center. We did look into that in the past. We've tried to take on a couple of the surrounding agencies around us. We've resisted ourselves going to a consolidated center for probably the last fifteen years through dispatching for the FD and trying to take on several of the towns around us. For whatever reasons, either they weren't ready to consolidate at that point, similar to us, or the, we couldn't meet the cost points of some other options that were out there. So, why now? Why are we looking at this now? A lot of it's technology, both the way that people call 911 and the way that services are provided through 911. Starcom, which is the countywide radio system again, pretty much right now, with that, Wooddale PD could dispatch for Wheaton PD. I mean, things that five years ago never could have even possibly been done in the county. You have countywide coverage through this Motorola Starcom system. And it's really changed things for the better as far as responses. Our SWAT response last week, that interoperable radio system was invaluable in handling that situation. So, it's a good thing, but with it comes some pressure to do, make some other moves. CAD systems, right now, we could walk over to Addison or ITASKA and pull up our CAD system and dispatch our units from their consoles right now. That's something that's obviously changed over the years that makes moving much easier. So, I'm going to try to break it down in just the five main reasons, really, that are driving the consolidation. One is the citywide staffing study that was done last year. What they said is relook at, you should relook again at consolidating your center for both service and cost savings. This was actually kind of a small part of it, but a reason why some of this started being talked about again. So, in January of this year, we talked to council a little bit about what the options were out there. Second part, second reason this is starting to go this way is the DuPage ETSB. They just passed a new consolidation policy. And their goal, I don't know what the final magic number is, but their goal is to get down to two to four 911 centers throughout the, throughout the county. They're planning a bunch of capital projects to upgrade the CAD system, the call-taking system, the report-writing system countywide. And obviously, for them to distribute the monies that they're getting, they're, the best way for them to buy, buy more stuff is to have fewer, fewer 911 centers. Each position, not only an initial purchase of equipment and servers, but the ongoing maintenance fees, costs hundreds of thousands of dollars per position. We currently have two positions. And as I mentioned, they just passed a new consolidation and reimbursement policy that promotes consolidation throughout the county. Right now, they've been paying almost 100% of all consolidation fees for agencies that are closing a current center. This is the big one that's really developed in the last month, is the 911 Services Advisory Board that was created by a public act last year. They were due with a report by April 1st to, to the state legislature. And this group was made up of state representatives from both political parties, ETSB representatives throughout the, throughout the state, telecom agency representatives, you know, who have the big lobbying money, police and fire representatives, citizen representatives. And they came out with their report. They, that was due by April 1st, that came out. The reason why this is so time-sensitive is July 1st of this year, the current 911 fees that pay for 911 systems are set to expire. Those are set to expire July 1st of this year. So, legislation is going to be coming this spring. I don't think you're going to see that lapse because otherwise, all the funding goes away. So, their recommendation that came out, some of the things that came out to that, and I've included a copy of that in your report. But basically, for DuPage County, as we fit into those guidelines, it's going to require the consolidation of fifty percent of our current 911 centers, which means we're going to end up with three or four in DuPage County, probably. At some point, we're not going to have a choice. This thing's supposed, the, the law that's proposed, like I said, it hasn't passed yet, but something's going to pass this spring, would require that by July 1st of 2017. So, right now, we have a choice. A year from now, we might not have a choice. This continues funding for both the wireless and the wireline revenues, which is the ones that go, are hard lines wired to businesses. And it actually increases the funding a little bit to eighty-seven cents per line from seventy-three cents per line. And then, believe it or not, there's counties in Illinois that still don't have 911 service. It's going to pay for the next generation 911 services throughout the state and extend 911 services to those counties. And if you think, I think Cook County, they're up in the dozens of 911 centers. They're going to have to consolidate several of those. So, actually, DuPage is in a, has been pushing this for a long time and is in a better position, so. Fiscal impact, this is always a consideration. Our current 911 center costs about $791,000 a year. That's a current year cost. It go up about four percent per year based on, based on salary increases, insurance increases, pension, whatever the cost may be. So, it covers everything, top to bottom. The only thing that's not included in that $791,000 is our cost for supplies, soft costs. You know, I didn't really think it was worth going into how many pieces of paper we use in there. It's just that there's a small additional cost with that, but our main cost is from the $791,000 per year. And like I said, with step increases or whatever, it's about four percent a year that that goes up. This past year, with the retirement that we had, that cost would have been about $90,000 higher with benefits, but we chose not to fill that position because we're not dispatching for the fire department anymore. So, we made a schedule based upon having less, less employees in there. And the last reason is wireless 911. We're at the point now that out of a million calls in DuPage County last year, 700,000 of them were wireless. So, seventy percent of all 911 calls now are wireless. So, ten years ago, when you'd call from your house and, you know, only twenty or thirty percent of the calls were wireless, they were almost all ringing right into the Wooddale Police Department where we dispatch police and fire. Now, they're going out to the DuPage County Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office receives all wireless 911 calls, and then they transfer to the 911 center that they feel is, the person is served by where their emergency is at the time. That's going to change. DuPage County is creating a, a new call routing system for the wireless 911 calls. And what's going to happen is those wireless calls will be routed by cell tower location. And so, if you're sitting in here right now and you hit the cell tower at the water treatment plant, with, when this new plan goes into effect later this year, it's not going to ring out to the Sheriff's Office. They're going to be routing it into our, whatever our closest consolidated center is. I've been told that they will not route it into individual 911 centers. So, if this change does not happen, our wireless 911 calls would ring out probably to Addison. And from there, Addison would then have to transfer into us. So, we still do have an issue of transfers. And obviously, I think in the next five to ten years, almost everyone's going to be wireless. Everyone's getting rid of their home phones, so that number is probably only going to increase. I think I touched on most of these. So, you know, theoretically, we could reduce some of these call transfers. In an ideal world, we would be dispatched police and fire out of the same 911 location. I certainly hope that that happens in the near future. And I know there's some discussions of possibly that happening at some point. But that is the best situation. Back when Wooddale was able to do both and most of the calls came in here, in my opinion, that was the best for the residents. And that's why we held off so long and fought to keep our own center open because it might have cost a little bit more, but I feel our residents were getting a great deal of service out of that. It's just, we're kind of getting to the point that we're being forced into consolidation. And that's why we're discussing here. So, options, based upon all those five factors, we were given direction by council to go visit Addison Consolidated Dispatch Center and DUCOM. We provided them a number of questions. The mayor and the chairman of the committee traveled and visited the centers. Based upon their responses to the questions and the cost factor, it's our opinion that Addison would be the best fit for us, provide us the best service. And I am joined tonight, if any questions come up along the way, by Dolores Temes from Addison and our supervisor of communications, Craig Celia. So, if you have any questions, they're here for them, too. So, based on that, we came back. I'll just do one quick touch on DUCOM. It's a large agency created in 1975. They service thirty-nine police, fire, and EMS agencies. They're pretty big. They are governed by their member agencies, and their costs are based, it's a per-officer cost. If we went with them, the first year would cost $371,000. The years two and three are estimates because they only set their budget for one year at a time. Total cost for three years, 1.167 million. ACDC, which is Addison, they expanded and they took on Bensonville in 2011. They currently dispatch for Addison, Bensonville, Bloomingdale, and their, the Forest Preserve will be with them within a couple of weeks, I believe. And I believe ITASKA is moving to their center based on their council action. They do have an advisory police liaison committee, which is involved police chief representatives that'll have input into operations, issues that arise, you know, to be able to address how the member municipalities want things handled. They also have an executive officer committee, which would be representatives from the city manager's office that would meet once or twice a year to talk budget, major operations and that. And we do have a vote on that. Obviously, with, with thirty-nine agencies, probably not as much of a say as we would have as if we're a member of just a few agencies. And then, those costs, which right now, their proposal is for three years, it's based upon whatever that agency's budget is. And each town's calls for service and traffic stops. They share a base, a share of that cost based upon how many calls for service you have and how many traffic stops you make. Their proposal for the next three years is $319,000, total cost of $957,000 for the next three years. Some of the things that we did like about Addison is some of the services that are offered beyond DUCOM. So, these are things that DUCOM really does not offer to us. They'll answer our non-emergency telephone calls. They separate 911 lines from non-emergency calls. So, if you are a DUCOM agency, you call 911 for anything to get their dispatch center. When you call our non-emergency number here, they're going to answer Wooddale Police. They're going to know that it's coming from a Wooddale, it's coming into a Wooddale non-emergency number. That's something that we feel is important to not tie up the 911 lines with non-emergency phone calls. They will do our lead system entry, and that is where we under all our stolen property, missing people, missing, stolen vehicles, warrants. They will handle all that for us, and that's something that DUCOM does not do. Validate those things on a regular, regular process. The housing process are warrants, so if we have a warrant, they will make sure they're in leads and handle those. They'll monitor our cameras at the station. I believe we get up to sixteen cameras that they'll monitor. They can activate when an officer's pulling in to get the garage door open and get us started through the holding cell process. They'll do public works notifications, activate the outdoor warning sirens. Obviously, being close to them, when theirs are going to be activated, probably ours are, too. You know, it's, it's a regional-type solution. The last thing is, a couple other things, as I mentioned, the Wooddale Police separate 911 things. We've got a couple extra ones here. They are an accredited agency as a police department, not as a separate communications unit, but there, there is a part of their law enforcement accreditation that deals with communications. As far as importance of handling 911 calls in a quick and efficient manner, nothing more frustrating than dialing 911 and it rings for thirty seconds. These are their stats based off of the same call-taking system that we have, so we know these are good stats. Their 911 calls are answered, ninety-nine point one-one percent of them are within five seconds. It's important for someone that's having an emergency. Ten seconds, ninety-nine point nine-six percent. So, on that one rare occasion that all of them are ringing off the hook, maybe a couple might go beyond ten seconds, but ninety-nine point nine-six, we feel, that's very similar to what our answering time is, and we think that's important. The non-911 calls, ninety-three percent within five seconds and ninety-nine percent within ten seconds. So, that's also very good numbers, we feel, that our residents would be looking for. You know, not a thirty-second wait for someone to answer the phone call. Their web portal, it's a web-based program that we can access both from the PD and all of our squad cars. So, in there, we can have overnight parking permissions. We can see who has overnight parking permission. There's arrest logs, lists of towed vehicles, relocated vehicles, repossessed, emergency conditions logs, such as sandbagging, you know, requests for salting, whatever the case is, they'll, they'll help us. We can just input and it'll go into those logs and be available online. Keyholder database, maps of facilities that we provide to them, schools, stuff like that, businesses that we're aware of, daily bulletins for us, vacant premise alert, vacation checks. We can track those in there and keep track that those are being done on a regular basis, and some permits. Finally, some of their additional services are after-hours, public works notifications. I mentioned that they'll monitor our cameras. They will provide copies of radio and telephone traffic per our request, whether it's for an internal request or for a court matter. We frequently get requests from court for our radio traffic. There'll be a dispute resolution system. So, if our watch commander says, hey, we didn't like how this call was dispatched, it's going to be handled quickly, right away. It'll flow through our, one of our command staff, through to their command staff and be handled quickly. They can help open the doors at PD. They also run and create, and conduct radio drills. With this new system, navigating your way around the new radio system, it's several channels and several, or several zones and several channels per zone. They run regular drills that say, all right, Wooddale, you've got this going on. We're going to switch to PD Region Four for traffic control, whatever it is. And we do some of these, too, but Addison does these drills, too, and we think it's important to keep those up so the officers, in the instant when something happens, know their way around the radio and the whole, the whole town does. They'll assist us with creating communications plan for special events. Kind of like when we have Prairie Fest here, we create communications plans and tactical dispatching plans that'll assist with those. They do have an ongoing customer service program and their quality checks. They do a number of quality checks on every dispatcher on a monthly basis to make sure they're treating people the way they should be treated. I think that's important, too. And their training includes an in-house training program. They have APCO-certified training officers, rapid response participation. They do some use-of-force training, training with their patrol officers, regular monthly trainings, and they do ride-alongs, so they're going to know our town, too. So, all that being said, three-year cost totals, Wooddale under the current system is about 2.4 million, DUCOM 1.1, Addison 957,000. We're not recommending the lowest bid just because it's the lowest bid. I think it has the best services and the best for our residents. The potential savings, the only thing I asterisk on that is there's going to have to be a separate looking at what ours council would want us to stay open if we look to do this and what positions need to be filled with that. So, you know, the, the big number there, it's not going to be that big, but it will still be substantial, the amount of cost savings that you would see with this. That would still have to be determined by council at a later time, how late you want to, if you want the window open 24 hours, late in the evening or, you know, normal business hours, and that, that's something that would have to be discussed. So, the next steps, if, if this is approved at the committee level and then at the full council level, we would begin operational and planning meetings with all the towns involved. Standard operating procedures would be developed, dealing with specifically how Wooddale responds to certain type of calls, be it bank alarms, how do we handle response to domestics? You know, each town handles those differently. Some towns might send a patrol officer and a sergeant. We send two and a sergeant. Each town has requirements. They will work with what our requirements are to dispatch our officers, how we want them to be dispatched. We would let ETSB know that we're looking to consolidate and start the ball rolling with seeking reimbursement for any of these costs. And then, obviously, radio engineers and all that would begin to put the plan in place to, to, to make a transition. And the transition would occur within the next several months. It just depends on how long of it takes, but probably later in 2015. Again, it's important, this is our, we, we value our employees. This is not from any internal drive of there's any issues or problems. It's a very difficult conversation to have with them. They're long-invested employees. It's not something that they brought on or that was brought on but anything that, other than technology, economics, and state legislation that's likely to come soon. So, I wouldn't change what we've done up to this point. And I guess, at this point, open it up to any questions? I know there was a lot to absorb in a few minutes.
Chief, go back, the, where you, where they were talking about sharing traffic stops.
Okay.
Explain that.
So, calls for service and traffic stops, we have a number of, let's say, we pull eighteen thousand numbers a year and another town pulls fifteen thousand per year, and the third town pulls twenty-five thousand a year. And we, and then we do a number of traffic stops. We average about six thousand a year in traffic stops. Some towns around us only do three thousand a year. What they'll do, there's a funding formula that they have that figures in your calls for service and your traffic stops and how much of an impact you have on the overall system for however many towns around there, and then the costs are split by that. Does that make sense?
Cost of the.
The cost of the Addison Consolidated Dispatch Center, then, would be split.
Okay.
So, let's say there's Bensonville and Bloomingdale already on there. If us and ITASKA end up on there, and let's just say there's a hundred thousand total calls for service and traffic stops. If we're twenty-four thousand of those, we're going to end up paying about twenty-four percent of the cost. It's going to be, how much are we using the system is how that, those costs are broken up.
Okay. All right, I'm sure there's a lot of questions on this. So, we're, do we have a motion to start? I really don't want to start with them, but I guess I'll start with them. Make a motion to enter into a. Make a motion, uh, to enter into, uh, intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wooddale and the Village of Addison for dispatching.
Second.
Okay, now we'll open up a few questions. Uh, we'll start with Alman Eugene Wesley.
I have a couple of questions, so if you don't mind. First off, maybe the Addison supervisor can answer a couple of these questions. Good evening. My first question is, who is a backup plan i- if your system goes down, who is a backup to back up you?
The DuPage County Sheriff's Department is our backup.
Okay, so that, that's one of my questions. The other question is, how many dispatchers will be on, may I continue?
Sure.
The other question I have is, how many dispatchers will be assigned to, in that room for Wooddale? Are we looking at, or are we only gonna have one dispatcher?
It's sort of a group effort. That's the beauty of consolidation, so there'll be four dispatchers at minimum working. So people are assigned to answer the phones and work a radio channel. So if, if Wooddale has an emergency, all four dispatchers may be working on that emergency at that time. So, and if Wooddale doesn't, then Bloomingdale does, then, you know, so it's, it's a lot of teamwork in the room, but there's one dispatcher assigned to the radio talk group all the time, and then a call taker assigned. But everyone's trained the same way, and everyone can do the same job.
So there will be, so there will always be four in that room?
Correct.
Okay. My, my other question is, and that was raised tonight either, uh, Chief, the reverse nine-one-one system that we have in place? I, I forgot the agreement that was, is, is that counted into this? Will they be able to activate our reverse nine-one-one system in the case of emergency in that situation?
We utilize, uh, DuPage County's reverse nine-one-one system, um, the separate system, is it code red?
Uh, blackboard.
Or blackboard. Yeah, we, we will not do that unless, I mean, we haven't really looked at how it works, the functionality. It would depend on how long it takes, but traditionally, we don't do, uh, activation systems.
So when our creek goes up to the level, we'll bring up the creek, our reverse nine-one-one system will not notify those people, so then it's up to us to notify them?
Yeah, and what we would do is, uh, currently, we have multiple supervisors that are already trained in the system, and what we would do is expand that training even further. Uh, the nice thing about the new system is, uh, the templates that we have set up for the salt creek reverse, the flooding, is, uh, it's very easy to go in, punch a button and get it done. When we have a bigger thing happen, uh, such as last Friday, uh, what that'll require is one of our officers or our supervisors, they'll have to go in, select it. Uh, in that case, uh, we would've used one of the command staff to go in and choose our location, call the people and say, "We have this type of emergency occurring in your area." And, uh, so it's gonna requi- require some increased training on our side, uh, but something I'm sure we can handle, and I like that system, and I think we've, as a city, have been able to use it for things more than emergencies, public works issues, community notification for events, uh, and that's actually coming up for a re- renewal soon, and, uh, as long as council's happy with it, uh, we'll just expand our training with it, and, uh, we like the system.
Okay. I have one other question as, that I'll, the other question is, when a complaint comes in from a citizen saying it took us so long to get the dispatch, could you just go through the procedure, how it will handle? I understand our chief will file a complaint with your dispatch center, and then you take it wherever we, how long is this turnaround on the complaint, and how does it work in that?
Usually takes about two days, um, for us to look into a complaint and get some resolution to you. So it doesn't have to be the chief, it could be a commander or sergeant that brings the complaint to our supervisor's attention. He'll take a look at it, and he may send radio traffic or a telephone call, and usually a memo with kind of outlining the details of, of the call, and then the resolution.
Okay, so the turnaround is pretty quick?
About two days.
I, I will tell you one thing, I said up here a couple of times that I get a phone call, "Well, why did it take so long to get there?" And I just want the people to know how long it'll take.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alman Jacobs.
I have a few questions as well, so if you could bear with me here. Number one, uh, when, on the call, when the officers, do they hear all the different cities being called, and their calls, or just, uh, Wooddale would just hear strictly Wooddale calls?
Well, in general, uh, we can choose who we wanna scan on our radio system. So our normal patrol officers, they can choose, "Hey, I'm gonna listen to Bensonville, Addison, Bloomingdale, uh, maybe even a little beyond that, you know, Isburn, whatever the case is." But then, Wooddale-Itasca is our primary channel right now. If there's any traffic that comes on that channel, our radio immediately switches over to that. So it's, it's really up to, uh, each officer to decide who they wanna scan. Uh, you know, some might be a little bit better at multitasking than others, and, you know, they'll just hit the town right next to them. Others will expand a little bit further. I choose to listen to several, uh, to, you know, throughout the county, um, but it's up to each individual officer to decide who they wanna listen to.
Okay. Um, second question, I have two questions on the intergovernmental agreement. Um, number one, it says if we ever want out of it, we have to give them a year notice, but it seems like they only have to give us, I, I couldn't find it, I think a month, they, they could give us like a month notice or something?
I don't know.
I, I thought it was, uh, similar provisions, but a year is, a year is only reasonable to give them if, if, if we were to decide to go somewhere else, uh, because there's personnel to consider. Uh, you know, this whole process, we're looking at a whole year from beginning to, to end of, uh, getting approvals to do anything like that. I believe, uh, it was similar, uh, language, uh, for them back to us. I'll try to look it up while we're talking here to make sure.
Yeah, for some reason, I thought they'd give us like a thirty-day notice if they wanna drop us, and that didn't seem right to me. And I can't remember which document I saw it in. But, uh, the next question, um, again, with intergovernmental agreement, and, uh, page three, I, the cameras, are they, have we tested to make sure they are compatible with ours?
We've not. Uh, we've not, so whatever system you have, generally, they're either IP-based, or we can come up with a solution, and that solution then is paid for out of the reserve contribution cost that's reimbursed by ETSB.
And, and Dee hasn't seen our system, we're on the same milestone system, so it, it'll, it'll transfer over. It's the, it's the exact same software provider, um, so that won't be an issue.
Okay, and final question, um, is there something we can do to help, uh, the people affected by this transition through this change?
Uh, I, I guess on our end, uh, the one thing that I know that Addison has done is let our people know about potential openings over there, and some of our people have chosen to explore some of those openings, some have chosen not to. Uh, I would certainly be open to any thoughts that council had on it, uh, as far as, uh, providing support to the employees, whether it be, uh, some, you know, career counseling or something, uh, but I would also say that, uh, due to, uh, labor union, uh, implications, you might wanna discuss some of that executive, that executive session at some point.
Okay, thank you.
Don't worry, we'll come back to you, because you will have more questions. Alman Woods. Oh, hang on. Maybe we go to the city manager.
Just to Alderman Jacobs' question, in section fifteen, the sixty days he was referencing, is if Wooddale decides not to pay Addison, they could, they could terminate us within sixty days of non-payment.
And on time.
I'll double-check, too. I'll go through my notes again, 'cause I know I saw it there.
Yeah, that's right next to where it says that we have to give a year.
Okay.
It says they can terminate us in sixty days upon non-payment.
Okay.
So that might've been what you saw.
See, that was another question.
And, and there is a thirty-day dispute resolution period that basically saying, "We still have to pay, but we have thirty days to dispute it," you know, "We still have to provide timely payment, but there is a, a protest resolution period, um, after the payment under protest has been made." So that's the thirty-day reference that was in there.
I don't think we're gonna have a problem. Alman Woods.
Yeah, um, my question has to do with the, the numbers we were talking about. Given the fact that you're gonna take on potentially two new communities, how many people you need to bring onboard? Do you need different facilities? And what do you think our response times and, and call times are gonna look like as opposed to what you're quoting us today?
We currently have seventeen dispatchers. We're gonna increase to twenty, um, and that's with both Wooddale and Itasca joining us. We have room in our facility. We have six full positions right now, and we have room to put in two more, so that should allow plenty of overfill, um, so I don't anticipate any problem there. I don't think response times are, are going to be affected. They, they should, they should maintain. I, I've studied the numbers, we know the amount of people that we have, and it should be spot-on.
Do we have potentially any others that are gonna join?
It's possible that we might have some fire departments.
And, and you'd be able to handle those?
We would have to...
I'm just looking to see if there isn't some implosion not to, in the not-too-distant future.
Uh, our, our member agencies have asked us to look into fire dispatch, um, for some of the reasons that Chief Estha mentioned. You know, one point of contact does work the best for the citizens. There's a response time that, that is lo- reduced when you have to transfer a call. So in the interest of, of call efficiency, uh, one point of contact for the dispatch center would make sense. However, we, we are nowhere near that point yet. Um, that would require, uh, a lot of, uh, research, and we may have to expand at that point, so, in, in the discussion stages right now.
Right. I, I mean, I just brought it up, 'cause once this came up, I went to a couple of the, the county meetings and was kinda shocked at how fast this is moving and how much it will be consolidated. So when he throws the numbers two or three down there, it's just a matter of time, so that's, I was just wondering how far out you guys are looking, and, you know, we don't wanna be like two years down the road going, "Okay, now what do we do?" 'Cause we didn't think about it. Thank you.
Sure.
My favorite, Alman Tony.
Okay. In reference to the, um, the landlines, as we know, they're going away, so when somebody makes a phone call with their regular phone in the house, will they know the address if they can't?
The same thing pops up. There's an Annie-Ele screen that's attached to a landline nine-one-one call, so, um, it's the same information that your Wooddale dispatchers have in front of them would be displayed in Addison.
Okay, so the address will pop up?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I'm, it's important that we consolidate for Du- just for the residents, not just for Wooddale, but for the whole county, too. The governor's been talking about it, everyone's been talking about it, making sure our tax dollars are being used in a wisely way. Um, I guess we have one more question, Alman Eugene Wesley.
The other reason that I see down the line here is, if we don't make this decision on, on our council level, it's gonna get to the point that, if we don't make a decision to go, or wherever we go, is the, the alarm that provided the money for this fund is gonna come to the point and says, "Okay, you haven't picked by July one, you're going to Naperville or somewhere else." They're going to mandate whoever don't go to the dispatch center, and we aren't having a control. So in this case, we have a control of who we pick and who we feel comfortable with to move the city into a more secure... I commend all the hard work that was done on this. Again, I just want everyone to know that we are not pushing the dispatchers out, it's the technology that's moving this forward, and, and this is a hard decision for this co- city council to make, and I think it's the best decision is right now, instead of us mandating and saying, "You're going here," so I support the move.
I knew it, one more question.
Uh, Chief Estha, um, now when we get a nine-one-one call, uh, I'm assuming the GPS, that's where you guys use the GPS, that you know this officer's closest to that house. Um, is that correct? Is that what the GPS is used for?
That's correct. We can see at any time where, where it is, and Addison, it's a county-wide system, so Addison will have access to the same information.
So what happens when a nine-one-one call comes in? Does a map of Wooddale pop up with the, and then you see where the, uh, different squads are and say, "Okay, that's where the house is, that's the closest officer?"
Yes, basically. Um, the, the only difference is that you have to put it into the, the computer-aided dispatch center, but then, yes, the map does pop up, shows where that location is, and then you can see the squad cars that are closest, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
It would be nice to take a tour to, to check it out.
Absolutely.
Yeah. That's all.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that the dispatch employees, in any way possible, the City Wooddale will be able to help them to locate another job in any which way. Um, that's very important to me. I want the City Wooddale, too. Okay, no other questions? Got a motion, get a sec? Second, real call, please. This is to switch to Addison Dispatch.
Alderman Jacobs?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Murray Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, anything for a future meeting, since this is my last one? Maybe? Um, nope, I need a, give me one.
Actually, I spoke to the chief before the meeting, but I don't know if it's gonna fall under his committee or Mr. Cage's committee. They're gonna discuss it, that staff...
Is this the, uh, building on Potter?
Right.
Okay, yeah, right what? We're gonna talk about it, staff.
Right.
I need a motion for adjournment. Alman, I'm waiting.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any opposed?
I want a call to order the Public Works Committee meeting. Uh, minute taken, please take note that the same council members are present.
I need a motion for the approval of minutes of, um, Public Works Committee of Regular Meeting of April ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
I make that motion.
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, uh, report and recommendation, uh, approval of relocation of the overhead underground electrical facilities along Commercial Street in amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-two-hundred dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Alderman Roy Wesley.
The funds for this, where's this all going to? I'm still learning how to work this new program here.
The, the question was, where are the funds coming from? Is that?
Well, is it for comm ed, is it for...
Yes, it's for comm ed to, um, to bury the underground lines and to take the poles out along, um, Commercial Street west of Irving Park, or, uh, Wooddale Road, between that and the, uh, um, swimming pool entrance.
And why are we totally underground? Why are we putting these all underground?
Oh, that would be the location of the new park area, and to get rid of the power lines that are in there, so it'd be a nice, open park without power lines running through the middle of it.
The park, okay.
Mayor.
Man, are some of these also on Wooddale Road and, uh, Irving Park, I thought? A few of them, because of the safety improvements, correct? I, I know we didn't get a map here.
Mr. Murris?
Yeah, this has been a, a long-standing goal of the council. It does incorporate some of the other poles, um, by Title Max, by Shorty's, Clock Tower.
Right, it's not just...
It doesn't incorporate anything east of, um, east of, uh, Wooddale Road, by the vacant parcel where the old seven-eleven was.
Alderman, uh, Eugene Wesley?
My question on this is, are we burying the lines on Wooddale Road? Are we, are we planning on the council to every year put money away to bury more lines down Irving Park Road and all that? Because I will tell you one thing, I just don't wanna piecemeal this project together. We do it this way, then we go fifty feet, and then we got more poles that aren't buried. Are, are we, are, is this council looking to commit money to do... Are we... Is this council looking to commit money to do some every year? Or is this a one-time deal and that's it? Because if that's the case, I'm voting no.
Go ahead.
Well, again, the goal is listed in the strategic plan, and while we talk about the intersection safety project, was to do the epicenter of the project. This is what that's doing. The only reason the eastern portion of Wooddale Road isn't being done with this is because there could be a future development there, and we don't wanna have to undo something that we paid money to do.
Go ahead.
That's got nothing to do with the safety improvement project.
But again, what I'm trying to say here, and I understand this is also to hear some lines on safety improvement. I'm saying, is this council gonna commit further down the line? Is this council gonna commit further down the line to start funding, burying the lines all the way down to borderline to borderline? Mayor, we talked about this before, and we wanna make sure it happens. I mean, we're going to piecemeal project together, and I don't wanna do that.
Go ahead, Mayor.
The plan for us is to definitely bury all the lines, of course. I think at one time we had a cost of two million dollars, but now you see that, being that they're working in this area, we're getting the cost savings. It's only gonna cost us one hundred and sixty-seven thousand. I think that's just about a third of what we were originally talking, Mr. Murmas. I can't... I don't recall exactly, but I know this is...
It's significantly less. The one other thing, too, is when we talk to comm ed, some of the lines have to be buried anyway in conjunction with this. So we're paying some small differences and whatnot in the area. It's the Commercial Street ones that are the big chunk, because technically they wouldn't have to bury those.
Right.
Alderman Jacob?
Two quick questions. Matt, we had said that it's not gonna cover any of the streetlights east of Wooddale Road. What about on the side? I know you said the vacant property, because of the vacant property, but what about on the other side by Christie's? Is that gonna be buried?
There are... Some of those are gonna be buried. This contract right here, though, and what we're talking about right here, is just for the removal of the six poles along Commercial. Commercial, that's it. That's the only thing that this contract here is covering, is the six poles along Commercial. The rest of the underground wiring, you know, rehabilitation that's happening is under the project itself. And some of that is being done because they have to move their wire from point A to point B. And in order to get it to point B, it's easier for them to go underground. Instead of having to take a pole down to move a pole over, it's easier for them to just go underground. These... They don't have to move these poles. It could be just right in the middle of our park. We could leave it like that. But this contract that we're trying for tonight is just for the removal of those six poles and all the other equipment along Commercial, right down here, in order for us, when we remove Commercial Street, there's not poles and wires right in the middle of that huge park area that we wanna build.
Go ahead.
So are you saying that when they do the corner project, lines are gonna be buried as well, and there's not gonna be an extra cost to us?
It's our understanding that all the wires in the epicenter of the project are being buried, except for east of Wooddale Road by the vacant 711 lot. And they're not being buried there because of future developments. And the reason why these, by Commercial, like Matt said, are more heavier price tag is because they don't have to bury those. There may be nominal difference in cost between the other lights by Title... Or the other poles by Title Max and whatnot, but that's a nominal cost, not hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Go ahead.
I guess finally, who's paying for that? Is that coming out of the funding we have received as a grant money or that we have received years ago for this project, or are we gonna be paying for that still?
Go ahead.
Yeah, we budgeted for this out of the CIP. This is not part of a grant. The grant does not cover this. So this is Wooddale budgeting for this and paying for it themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Roy Wesley?
We budget out of what fund?
This is budgeted out of the CIP fund, general fund, CIP.
Utility tax?
Whatever Mr. Wilson has put in. It's not...
The slew of revenue streams that contributes to the CIP.
CIP. Just like we purchase road projects, sanitaries, or stormwater projects, it's all the same, CIP money.
Or clock towers coming out of CIP, too, so I need to know where is this coming out of?
CIP.
I was wondering when you'd bring that up.
It's okay. It's coming up soon, believe me.
The general fund, CIP.
Another question on this is Commercial. We purchase most of the buildings there, pretty much. We have... Do we know where we're gonna need power for this park or whatever? Do we need power down that street?
Go ahead.
Well, I believe that the power lines that we're burying are also the same power lines that feed the swimming pool. So all... Any power lines that are there, they're for a reason for right now. I mean, obviously, the 144 commercial building is still there. There's the people next door that have the truck dealer place that's still there. The church is still there, and then across the street, the swimming pool. And I'm sure that looping of their electrical system goes down to Grove. All that... All those wires are all interconnected, so...
Go ahead.
So my question... So you went halfway to the question. Did you look at another route of looping if we don't need the power there? If those buildings aren't there, eventually they're not gonna be there. Half of those buildings you mentioned are not gonna be there. The park, the pool is gonna be there. The houses are gonna be there on Grove Street. So I'd like to know, are we burying six lines of power for buildings that aren't gonna be there?
Go ahead.
No, we addressed this with them. Those power lines are needed to service down by the pool. You can't get rid of it. That power's coming from somewhere else heading west. And the first drop up is just west of the pool parking lot.
Okay, so those...
It's one continuous line. And then when you have the building that's still there now, the drop is by the pool parking lot, and then it would go across the street from there. That drop would go way down the road potentially, but the power line is still needed to move west.
Okay. It just seems like an awful lot of money that's gonna...
Mayor?
Not to mention for the future, depending what the council decides to put as far as a pavilion or whatever they're looking to put over there in that park area, they're gonna need some power.
Okay, one more question, and then we're gonna take a roll call. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have one more question. That's it. The price tag on here is one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars, right? Now, next month, am I gonna have comm ed come knocking at my door and say, "Now we gotta pay another six hundred thousand dollars for engineering," or is this the total cost of this project? Because I can see it coming down the line.
Go ahead, Mr. York.
If I say this is the total cost of this project, I may be wrong. What they are saying is, this is their engineering estimate, design estimate. Their design estimate is one hundred and eighty-five thousand. We've already paid the original deposit of seventeen eight, which leaves one hundred and sixty-seven two to pay. We have to pay them fifty percent upfront so they can start doing their work. And then at the end of the day, we'll have to pay whatever's left minus the amount of monies that we've already paid. So it may be more than eighty-three thousand, six hundred dollars that is left to pay, maybe a little bit less. It all depends on what the actual cost of the project is. What they're estimating the actual cost of the project is gonna be one hundred and eighty-five thousand. So... So, yes, they may ask for more money.
So now, instead of one hundred and sixty-seven, I know we gave them some deposit. Shouldn't that be not to exceed over one hundred and eighty-three thousand, huh?
No, because they believe the cost of the project is gonna be one hundred and eighty-five thousand. So we've already given them some money, so the remainder of that is one hundred and sixty-seven two. But we have to give them... We're gonna give them half of the money on the next list of bills.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
First name.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is approval of amendment number four with H.R. Green for Elgin-O'Hare Western Access Project to extend the agreement an additional six months and increase the amount not to exceed four hundred and ninety-four thousand. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Jacob?
Mr. York, on this particular item, we've extended it a couple times. I mean, why don't we... Is there a reason why we just don't do a full year? I mean, the project's not gonna be done in six months. Are we gonna keep coming back every six months? Can't we just do a year, or...
Yeah. The rationale for having it every six months is this project has kind of had ups and downs and hills and valleys of expenditures throughout it. And it's kinda hard to predict that far out in advance how much money the engineering firm is going to wanna charge us. I mean, I'm sure that they... If we ask Mr. Marquardt, who's here, if he would like to go for a year, he'd probably say, "Okay." But what we'd like to do is try to keep our... Keep our cost is as close that we can project out. And six months is a good amount of time for us to be able to reject out those costs. We could say, you know, here's eight hundred... Not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars or whatever for the next year, but that's probably not realistic. But if we know that they had about eighty-five, ninety thousand, hundred thousand left over, and they're gonna add on an extra fifty-three thousand, that keeps us... Keeps it tight for us as a community and not overreaching.
Any more questions? Roll call?
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Next is approval of intergovernmental agreement between the city of Wooddale and Wooddale Park District for the installation of the sidewalk along Hemlock Side of the Central Park. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Matt, could you tell me if this has already been cleared all the residents ago, or are we still waiting?
We are still waiting some easements on those access agreement easement, temporary construction easements. We've run into a little snag that one of the houses is owned in trust, and so we're working through some of those issues with that resident right now. There's only three of them on this project. One of them's ago, for sure. Her documents were dropped off to be signed. The other two, she is championing the cause in that neighborhood for us, so she has talked to both of the residents. I'm just having a tough time getting hold of them to get the correct paperwork signed. So we should have... Hopefully have that for the next board meeting. That's what my goal is, to have that for the next board meeting.
Aye, thank you.
Any more questions? Mr. Alderman Woods?
Not so much a question, a statement. There's some typos and an issue with the insurance, but I'll talk to you offline.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is approval of the three-year contract with the GPS Insight of Scottsdale AZ for AVL services in the amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand, fifty-nine dollars and forty cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Alderman Roy Wesley?
I was trying to understand this a little better. You have monthly fees. You have... Do we own this? These GPSs are releasing. You have a couple of things here.
Mr. York?
Yeah, so we will own these pieces of equipment. So we purchase the equipment, we install them. That's the initial fourteen thousand plus. The monthly costs are because these are cellular phone-based systems. So just like your cellphone, we have to pay a certain amount of money each month for the pinging rates. And the pinging rates change your monthly cost. So, for example, the ten vehicles that we primarily use for snow plowing, in the winter months, we take them down to a ten-second ping, which costs more money than we would on a thirty-second ping, which is what our normal going rate is gonna be. We did that for the purpose of, we could be in and out of a street in twenty-nine seconds. You know, a little cul-de-sac, a bubble, or something like that, it would never ping. So we would never show that we were there. So that's why we've done that. But the monthly cost that we see on here is the cellular phone cost.
I got a couple more.
Go ahead.
The company here, is their software, I take it, and we're going through them. What... What... If they went out of business, where do we go with this? This company?
Yeah, well, I guess if they go out of business, then we're...
Out sixty-two thousand dollars?
Well, technically, not. I mean, it's a yearly charge, so we would pay for it a year at a time. But we contracted it out for a three-year period, because that's what initially we talked about at the committee level before, that we wanted to do it for a long, three-year period. And in order to do that, we get better rates by doing it that way.
My question is really going towards, the equipment here, is it compatible with other companies?
I do not know the answer to that question. I can find that out.
I think that would be important, because if that company is not around, companies change every day. I would like that equipment compatible with another company. You never know.
Go ahead, Mr. York.
I'm gonna kinda step on a limb and say that they're probably not compatible with other companies, because these are proprietary to each of these companies. That's why GPS Insight has their own company. GPS Insight, though, does service a lot of municipalities, especially public works departments throughout the country. So it's not a fly-by-night company. It's not Joe and Ted's AVL system. So I don't have the issue of them going out of business. But if they do go out of business, I mean, obviously, we could probably go after them for our money through bonding agencies or, you know, bankruptcy or whatever. But the... All of these are gonna be proprietary to be able to not just read the ping, but then to read back to the computer program system, which will show what was happening at that given time at that location on their website or on their service.
I still would like you to see if you could find that answer out. And remember, it's a big company, too. No longer around.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Matt, how... Who's gonna be in access to the system to monitor it?
Go ahead, Mr. York.
Well, we haven't come up with the internal policies yet for this program. Just off the cuff, I would probably say myself and my two assistant directors and possibly Mr. Murmas. Other than that, it's gonna be a pretty tight-knit group of the people that have access to this equipment.
Go ahead.
The only question is, is there a way that someone could turn the system off on a vehicle and unplug it with whatever piece of equipment at the end? Unplug it and we don't get signals or whatever?
Yeah, we can work with the company to make sure that if a vehicle is in motion... Basically, what it's done is, it's connected to the ODP of the car. So, I mean, we can monitor it on a daily basis. I can monitor, you know, check it once a day. If I know vehicles are out, I can, you know, take a look at it. You know, it's like anything else. I mean, someone can always get around it if they wanna try to get around it. I mean, I think that's our job as the public works director and assistant directors to be able to monitor that part of it, you know. And policies will have to be put in place that if this happens and it's tampering with, then, I mean, certain disciplinary actions have to take place. But, you know, I think the way that it's set up, I mean, we're gonna have our mechanics are gonna be the ones that are gonna learn how to put them in, so we can take them out of one truck and put them in another truck without having to hire someone to come in and do it for us. So we're gonna have people that have the knowledge and the wherewithal to do that. But I think that's our job to monitor that part of it and to work with our employees.
Go ahead.
Well, I guess it would depend on if it's a personnel procedure, internal policy versus a citywide policy. I guess I would defer to Mr. Murmice or legal counsel to fully answer that question.
So, um, so for instance, it's costing us sixty-two thousand dollars just to keep tabs on our employees. What else is this giving us?
Well, it can give us, um, you know, a rate of speed. It can give us idling time. We can use it to hopefully reduce some fuel usage. Um, there are parts of this that we can, to turn on, like blade up, blade down for snow plowing process. So if we see that a truck's out, but it doesn't have its blade down, you know, we can discuss that. But, um, basically, it's a vehicle locating system. I mean, in and out of it, that's what it is.
That's what it is.
It will tell us where they're at, what speed they're driving, how fast they start, how fast they stop, um, idling time, um, and where they're at and what, kind of what they're doing.
Do we have a lot of problems right now with keeping tabs on employees?
I guess I would defer to other people's opinions on that, but I would say no.
Okay. Mr. Jacob?
A couple items. Number one, in response to Mr. Catala, Alderman Catalano's. Uh, this is not just for keeping tabs on employees. I mean, big corporations all around the world are using this to help their companies. UPS uses it. I mean, there's FedEx. So, I mean, it's going to help be more productive in the city for public works to do that, I would assume, correct, Matt? It's going to.
Yeah, I mean, there are benefits to knowing where the individuals are, especially in emergency situations. Um, is it going to be something that we use every single minute of every single day? The answer to that question is no. I mean, we're just, we're just not going to be able to do that. I don't, I mean, unless I can hire a person that that sole purpose is to monitor the traffic.
Can't hurt.
Okay, thank you. So that answers that question. So, I mean, we'll be, we'll use it to the fullest extent that we can.
Good. Um, next question, did we look into possibly leasing the equipment? I mean, I'm imagining a GPS unit is like a cell phone. Every year, they come out with a new, more modern version of one. It might make more sense to, again, I don't know if the cost, what the cost would be, but I don't want to be buying equipment every two, three years because it's outdated.
Yeah, this is all upgradable, um, systems. So they upgrade them through the cellular phone, just like the ping rates are, so they can be all the time upgraded. Um, will it be a point in time where this AVL doesn't? Um, there's a bigger and better one, probably. But in order for this, to do the stuff that we're, that we have asked for it to do, um, after our discussions before of what you wanted to do, and we said we wanted to do pretty much the lowest rent rung of the ladder. Um, I don't have a problem with saying that this will probably be good for, I would say, six to nine years. This, and then like any other piece of computerized equipment, you know, there'll be a point in time where we're going to have to remove it and put something else in. But, I mean, we can go back and ask them about a leasing possibility. But, um, I think the purchase of this will incrementally be less expensive for us.
Thank you.
Alderman Norwood?
Yeah, do they have any data on breakage and failure rates of the units, maintenance costs? This kind of seems to be the idealistic approach in the perfect world.
I do not have that information, but I can, I can get that from them before next week.
And then, uh, the next thing with keeping track of comparing us to UPS. I mean, how big is the town, six square miles, Matt?
Um, I don't believe it's that much.
So, we're not going to send anybody to Buffalo or Cleveland or?
Um, I don't believe so.
If they're one end of the town, they got five miles to drive to the other end of the town. So I'm just looking to see where we recoup some of the expense. If we're just going to incur expense in order to have a nice tool, it's nice. And I get that you can monitor blade up and blade down. But I'm not visualizing that as a big problem. And if I was asked to figure out where I could spend sixty-three thousand dollars to improve the city, this might not be the top of my list, although there are some benefits. You'd have to save a lot of gas to pick up to twenty thousand dollars a year. And as we know, these systems always go up, right? There's probably subscription and, you know, software updates and all that stuff along the way. And it's like you said, the longevity of product is what, maybe three years? I mean, what are cell phones? What are iPads? What are laptops? So, a five-year cycle is probably closer to reality. Thank you.
Mayor?
Actually, maintenance was one of my questions that you answered. The other one, some of the things that this will track is, when residents call and say, hey, there's a plow hasn't been down my street in all day, we'll know exactly where the plows were. Or nobody's brought out any sandbags and, well, yes, they were out there, but all the residents took them. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, the biggest, the biggest usage of this would be for the first situation, the snowplow. Um, you know, we're not going to GPS the skid of sandbags. I mean, we can say that we were there at this, the truck that was carrying it was there at this time. It stopped there for a minute. We can only assume that they put the sandbags down there. I mean, but, yeah, that's basically what this system will do.
Again, I'm not a big fan of Big Brother watching and everything and all that stuff, because it is sixty-two thousand over three years. But, um, basically, if we can, if we do get the increased efficiency that I keep hearing by having these on the truck, it may be useful, only by doing this will we find out for sure.
What is the increased efficiency, though? I'm not hearing that.
Well, that's some of the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, that's what they touted for, gas savings and stuff. And I can't give you how much gas savings we're going to use by having this on there, because we don't, I don't have anything to base it off of. I mean, they say basically, um, you know, twenty percent reduction in fuel usage or something, you know, ish, because it's based upon idling time. If the person knows.
Could we just implement a no idling policy?
We could do that, mhm.
Yeah, it doesn't want.
Mr. Eugene Wesley?
If you enforce it, where somebody's caught. And the same with this, it's not going to work if somebody forces it, so.
Go ahead.
My question is, and I'll be totally honest, I'm the one that brought this to the forefront. The point is, we already do it to squad cars. Why can't we be uniformed to the whole entire city? We had a conversation with this before. The council was all on board. Then you might as well not even put them on the squad cars and have them disconnect them. All I'm saying is, why is one department's different than the other? All I'm saying is get uniformed.
Public safety.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. It's public safety for the snowplow too. You're going to know exactly where that plow was at the time. I mean, I'm looking at doing it to the building department citywide on all vehicles. I mean, I'm not picking on one department, but you do it uniform.
Mr. Jacob?
Um, in reference to something the mayor said, since I've been in office, and I know we now have outsourced our street sweeping, but I've had many people tell me, I've never seen that street sweeper down my street. This, at least now, we can tell people exactly, yes, it was down your street on Monday at four P.M.
No, you can't, because we subbed out.
Well, but whatever, I mean, what other questions they could have, I mean, the snowplowing.
All the things you guys are bringing up is creating.
Right. So let's have a few more questions, and then we're going to take a roll call. Mr. Roy Wesley?
You know, you mentioned if we had problems with employees with this, having this. Yeah, we have had problems with employees leaving the area, leaving the town, and they weren't supposed to. And is it a Big Brother thing? Not necessarily. It's also to, if they hit a mailbox when you're plowing, that's to keep track of that. If they get in an accident, we know how fast they're going. It's to help with that too. And, you know, Matt, there's a lot of questions. The two questions that you couldn't answer, Ken put this report together. Um, maybe Ken should be here. Maybe he could answer the questions next time. Maybe not informed here enough, so, to get the questions answered. That's all.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Motion carries. Okay, next is declare multiple surplus items for the city fleet and police seizures. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, questions, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
When we sell this equipment, the vehicles that we're doing, is that going, is that going back in the general fund? Or is that going under the police forfeiture?
Go ahead, Chief.
These two seizures were not narcotics forfeitures, so those will be going back to wherever the city designates, which I believe you have a separate spot in the general fund now. But it's not a narcotics forfeiture fund seizure.
So, so my question is, so with the new budget and the money that's coming in for vehicles that we get rid of, are we putting that back into for vehicle replacement funds? Or is that going, dumped back in general fund?
Go ahead.
Maybe Jeff can answer that question.
Go ahead.
Well, when you have a huge pile of money in the general fund and you allocate money towards the SURF fund, I guess you could say that if you want that twenty thousand dollars that you put back in the general fund went into the part of the SURF fund that was twenty thousand dollars, so you could say that.
Well, the reason why I'm looking to that is, then when we come up and buy vehicles, we may not have to go as much into the general fund to take money out to buy that vehicle. We'll build up that vehicle replacement fund and say, okay, we got enough to buy this many vehicles. We don't have to withdraw a hundred and some dollars or, instead.
Yeah, I mean, we could, if we get more credit, I mean, that's just, it's all going into the same fund and then moving into the SURF fund. So, yeah, I mean, if we get good auction money, less money from the general fund that we didn't have, then we can use that. I mean, if you think about it that way, sure.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is items to be considered at future meetings. There's no items. Anybody have anything? Mr. Jacob?
Um, I'd like to discuss down the road, have some clarification on street projects. Uh, we currently have a project going on in my ward, and I had some questions on cracks. When do we replace the curbs, when we don't? And as far as I could tell, we don't really have a policy. And each engineering company has their own policy. So I'd like to know, as an alderman, when we have a road project, that if the crack's six inches wide and two inches high, that yes, we will replace the curb or some type of policy going forward. So we at least know what to tell the residents.
After the flood, it's taken care of. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
The other thing I really would like to look at is, I really would like to look at the water main project on Irving Park Road. Um, I forwarded some info today down to Mr. Murmice and Matt York. Uh, there's a new fund that started down in Springfield. It's a Clean Water Act. And it's a low-interest loan that we could get like a treatment plant. So therefore, we don't have to go into our general fund to pay for it. This money's going to be available in October. Um, I guess what we're trying to do is we're trying to coordinate this project when they're doing Irving Park Road reconstruction, so we don't have to dig that street up twice. So I would like that brought forward as soon as possible, once we get the info from EPA. I forward it all to Jeff to move it forward.
Okay, any more items? I need a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Motion carries.